Known as the Texas Treasure Business Award. The criteria for the award, just so you will know, is the business has to be 50 years old or older. The business has to be a for-profit business. Now, we like nonprofits, but this particular award has to be for-profit and it has to be an independent business, continuously offering the same or similar services over its lifetime, and then special recognition if it is a family-owned business. So with that, let me invite Carrie and Julie to come up here because I want to point something out on this particular award. Come on up here. Julie, you too. So Carrie, on this award, this is one that we put together back in 2005, and by the way, we have done over 500 of these for businesses all over the state of Texas. And being the deputy executive director meant that I could go wherever I wanted to and present them. And Carrie, I tended to go to those that were food establishment. I don't know why. I'm not sure. But anyway, what is special about this award? And when you see these in businesses around the state, you won't always see this line, but you will hear. And it says, "Family owned and operated in Texas." So that is a special part of the recognition of this award. And on behalf of the Texas Historical Commission, we want to present this award to you, and it's signed by Senator Burdwell and Representative Slosson, John Now, who is the chairman of the agency, and Mark Wolfe, who is the executive director, and is with their accolades that we want to present this to you, but not yet because the mayor has a proclamation that he is going to read. So hold for just a moment.
This is the Texas Treasure Award. Whereas the Texas Treasure Award pays tribute to our state's well-established businesses and their exceptional historical contributions to communities across Texas. Whereas when Jake and Dorothy Roach opened their cafe in June of 1948... Were you around then? 1948.
Barely.
Barely. Harry Truman was president, and the latest inventions were the Polaroid camera and the transistor radio. 1948 also brought in Porsche and NASCAR. And whereas here in Steenville, we believe that Jake Roach created the most noteworthy invention in 1948, which was the waffle fry. I actually said that to somebody who was selling waffle fries in Las Vegas a few weeks ago. They hardly believed it.
They're not cutting them like we do, by the way.
I know. Whereas Jake and Dorothy's Cafe has been featured on Day Tripper, Texas Country Reporter, Authentic Texas, named among Texas Monthly's 40 Best Small Town Cafes, and Dave Campbell's Best Game Day Grub in Texas in 1922... Or 2022. And... Scared me. Whereas even after 75 years, Jake and Dorothy's Cafe still serves up consistent, delicious food made from scratch. And whereas Jake and Dorothy's Cafe is family-owned and operated by Jake and Dorothy's own daughter, Carrie Jane Roach, and whereas in honor of 75 years of chicken fried greatness, I name June 12th Jake and Dorothy's Day. Now I therefore, Doug's famed Mayor of Steenville, Texas, do hereby issue this proclamation in recognition to Jake and Dorothy's Cafe in recognition of the Texas Treasure Award.
Want to say something?
All I want to say is this is for my mom and daddy. It's for them.
Have you ever estimated how many chicken fried snacks you've served? General discussion, as the time will allow, citizens to speak. We have one person who's signed up, Mary Flatbush. You have three minutes. If you'll give us your name, your address, you have three minutes.
Mary Flatbush, 198 South Belknap is my store address. So let me introduce myself. I'm Mary Flatbush. I own Johnny and June's, which is on Belknap on the corner of College. I'm gonna look at you. A lot of us, and I also own a store in Granbury called Mary Jane's. I have been there for eight years. A lot of us have questions regarding the film-friendly ordinance and its effectiveness at its currently written. We voiced our concerns to the city manager, Main Street Manager, on March 7th, and the very next day, the film crew handed out papers to let us know that they would be filming. It became clear to us then that our concerns fell on deaf ears. The set, of course, was closed. In a similar fashion, we were told that our businesses would have to be closed for three days. But I had to close my business for 10. It has been the experience of business owners that have been here longer than me that when there is a disruption, whether it be road construction or road closure, traffic to businesses always suffer, and people simply avoid downtown. And we are still hearing to this day, we didn't know you were back open. And the film's been done for a couple of weeks, or a month. There are people who still, like I said, under an impression were still closed. I think it would have been better planning if business owners were actually included in the conversation in regards to parking and closures during the filming downtown. I think we all suffered, not only just our businesses, but citizens, the city, everyone. Many of us feel that the film downtown was not a positive experience overall. December 1st, we had a meeting for retail strategies, and we have not received any feedback from anyone about the outcome. We were told that we would know within three months, and we still haven't heard anything. We would like to know when to expect the results from the company and what they found and what their suggestions are and when some of these strategies are going to be implemented. Also, parking is an issue for downtown. We need signage for parking, more handicap parking, especially since I'm handicapped and I take the one spot that's in front of my store. The other ones are all in front of the courthouse, which doesn't do anyone that's trying to shop around the square ample parking for handicap. We think the local merchants might benefit from a letter from the city that encourages owners and employees to park away from the entrances to businesses and leave parking for customers. My understanding is that part of Main Street and tourism job is to create events that will promote our downtown and our city. Aside from Mula Fest, I have not seen any other events that have happened. Not saying there's more coming, but so far I have not seen any. Producing and running events seem to fall on their merchants when some of the load should fall on the city and the Chamber of Commerce. As I said in my introduction, I have a store in Granbury on the square. I have been open and thriving for eight years. The Historic Downtown Merchants Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the city, and our tourism berg all work together to make Granbury a place that never seems to stop promoting itself and its businesses to make it successful. I was considering opening another business here, but at the time, I probably won't be. My personal opinion is that everyone seems to work against each other instead of working together as a collective unit. And that would be city council, the city, the county, downtown merchants. I'm gonna get upset. Downtown merchants, Main Street, and tourism. Being that I'm a veteran, I don't fail, and I feel like I'm failing in this town. Granbury embraces everyone. When we have ribbon cutting, our mayor comes to us. When we open, our mayor, our city council, everybody comes to visit us and welcomes us. I have not met anyone other than LeAnn and Jason and Julie. No one else. I've been here over a year, and I can guarantee most people in Steenville don't even know I'm here, even though I advertise like crazy. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll go to the regular agenda items. First one is consider approval of the date, July regular city council meeting changing. Jason?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna... Were you gonna handle?
The first Tuesday in July is July 4th, and so as we've set up in the charter, that's when our normal business meeting is, and so to change that requires a vote of the council. So we're proposing to move it to the next Tuesday, July 11th.
May I have any questions? Can I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we move our next regular city council meeting to July 11th.
Second. Have a motion as second. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, consider approval of proposed charter amendment for the November 23rd special election.
Yeah.
I'm here, David. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the charter committee has met, and I'd like to bring forth a couple of the following proposals. The first proposal I'd like to bring forth to the full council is a proposal to change the number of city council members from eight to six. We can have discussion on it, or I'd like to look for a motion on that.
Discussion? Questions?
I'm just gonna go on what Lon's saying, too. We had our committee met with several council members as well as citizens. Rhett, thank you so much for being on that as well. The reducing the number from eight to six, really the biggest reason why we want to do that is to have more contested races as well. So that we have, we reduce our number, we have more of the voters, the citizens have more of a choice when it comes to the election, and we're not just having people come up and jump in seats. We feel like the reduction in the number will definitely help that and encourage more people to run, so.
Jason, do we have any case, other examples in other cities our size? What's typical?
If I remember from 2018, we were, cities our size, there was, I don't, like, less than 10 or something that had councils this size. I mean, we're a rarity across the state for a group this size.
Other questions?
Okay, so I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we amend Article 3, Sections 1, 5, 7, and 9, Article 8, Section 8 of the City Charter of the City of Steenville to provide for the following: Reduce the number of Steenville City Council members from eight to six and change the number required for quorum from six to four, and authorize existing Steenville City Council to adopt rules of transition. The amendment will promote additional contested city council... Oh, sorry. I don't have to read that part, do I?
I agree.
Yeah, I'm through.
The motion needs to read that you're making a motion to put this proposition on ballot.
Me, go ahead and start all the way over? I will amend my proposition to put this...
Some people think about parliamentary questions, but no, I'm not gonna make you do that.
Thank you, Randy. I will amend my proposition to put this on the November 23 ballot.
As a proposition.
As a proposition.
Have a motion on your second?
Second.
Have a motion as second? You have a discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Mayor, we'd like to bring forward for discussion of the full council and our charter review that we would look at extending the time of, the time for our council members to be on the council. We've looked at two different options. Right now, you know, it's two and two. We're looking at two, two, and two election, or two, three-year terms. So two, two, and two in terms, and three, two, three-year terms, which would make it possibly six years. So I'd like to have any discussion from anyone that'd like to discuss that.
You look right at me.
I'm looking at you.
Well, I, like I said in our meetings before, I think the idea of two, three-year terms makes more sense from a council person's point of view because it's a lot of work and it's a lot of things being thrown at you that first year, and then the next year, you're turning around and it's time to decide if you're gonna seek reelection or be campaigning. And so it, I think it makes it difficult to get a lot done and to learn what you're doing.
Anybody else?
I know it was the pleasure of the committee that we did the two, two, two. It was not a unanimous vote, just so everyone's clear. It was a four to three vote for us to do the two, two, two for lots of reasons. One reason that the citizen discussion was during the committee meeting was we have, basically, you have two years, and if the council person is not doing their job up to the...
Standards?
The standards that the community would lack, we, you have a quicker time, turnaround time to do the vote and get the person out of office or have them have somebody run against them in that scenario, which I totally understand as well. But I'd like to hear other council members' thoughts on that as well.
Well, LeAnn, I can understand what LeAnn's saying about the two, three-year terms, that it does give the council member a year to learn everything that we need to learn up here, and then it gives them two more years to be a part of the council. And I do understand what you just said, David. That was discussed, that if we do have a council member that the city's not happy with, then after two years, they can vote them off. And so I think we're still looking at, when we start looking at it, we're looking at six, a possible six-year term is what we're looking at. And that's something else everyone has to, when it comes to, when we take this to a vote, that they're understanding that we're looking at a six-year term either way. So there was a lot of discussion on this, and it was a, you know, like I said, it was a four to three vote. I think, I think, I think both parties, everybody that has their ideas, I think the ideas are good. I can see both ways. And Mayor, I mean, we can look at a vote today, or we could table this for more discussion.
Well, we have two more, another two members of the nominating committee. Were you all participating in that?
No. It was myself, LeAnn, Lon, and Bob.
Okay, Bob?
Excuse me. My opinion is probably about the same thing as LeAnn's. My experience, since I've gotten on the council, is my fir... I guess I shouldn't say this in public. My first year, I spent a lot of time just trying to figure out what the heck was going on. And, you know, and I understand during our committee meetings, you know, that at some points, if you've got an opponent, you're gonna have to spend a lot of time campaigning if you want to maintain your seat on the council. And that two, two, two plan, basically, you're learning, if you get elected, you're learning your first year, and then you don't do anything the second year because you're campaigning because somebody's running against you. If we did the three, three, in my opinion, you'd have one year for learning, one year for actually doing something because you learned what's going on, and then if you get an opponent, then the third year, you can spend campaigning or doing whatever you want to do to get reelected. That's the way, that's been, that's been my experience. That first year was a very steep one.
Any other council members want to comment? Patty, Randy?
So it's, we were talking about three, two-year terms?
Yes. Two, three-year terms or two, two, and two.
And this is to go, proposal again for the...
November election.
November election.
Yes.
All right. That's, I mean, that's only, that's the question I, you're talking about a six-year term either way.
Either way. We also, we also had a member of this committee, a citizen, a huge big council member. Rhett, would you like to come up and say some?
We also have someone here that, I mean, we applied this in 2019.
The election didn't go like it saw.
Why don't you all come up here both, so we can have you on record?
Come on, Rhett.
When we originally proposed the term limits, we thought both would pass. So we thought we'd get term limits and two, three-year terms. That's what we thought we'd get. But the voters said no to the three-year terms, and we got term limits and limited it to four years, and that was never our original intention, but that's what we got because that's what the voters wanted. So I don't know what their pleasure will be this time, but it, we were looking at the three-year terms, and we thought both would pass, and they didn't.
That's Carla Trussell, she's on council back of the previous one.
When we did this before?
Quite simply, I think y'all need to look at what the priority is here, and if it's going to be a six-year term, which that was our intention to begin with, like what Carla said, I don't think there's any question that the two, three-year terms would be, I think the community would be more responsive to that.
Two, three years?
Two, three-year terms.
But more or less.
They weren't, and that's the reason for it. I mean, if we, if we look at it, when we tried to move it, move the terms from two to three years last time, it failed significantly, over 60%. And like I said, I think it's a priority, it's a pleasure of the council, but just focusing on that, if you put it on the ballot and you want it to pass, it is my opinion that the two, three-year terms would be more suitable for the public.
You know, you're saying two, three-year terms, but in the past, you said the three, twos.
No, well, no, 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 no. As a matter of fact, I agree with LeAnn in principle. I think it helps the council member. I don't know that the community responds to it as well. And therefore, even when I voted in committee, I voted for two, three-year terms, and I explained that. I agree with LeAnn, but I don't think it's practical for the purpose of this ballot. I really don't, so.
Any questions?
So Rhett, you're thinking, you understand the two, three-year terms that you kind of favor, but you think the community might look at that as being too long on, too long on the council, so if they're unhappy, the two, two, and two, they'd be more favorable?
We actually did some exit polling last time, to an extent, and one of the main reasons was exactly what David said, was that the citizens want to have the ability to unelect someone if that be the case. And two years is more favorable than three in that regard.
You might have any questions for Rhett?
Well, do you not think that in the, because that was, what, five years ago?
It's 2018, so, yeah.
Yeah, so five years ago. That our pool of voters has changed in five years. Steenville has changed a lot in five years. So, you know, I mean, it might be, I don't know.
Can I ask you a question? I'm wondering that when y'all were talking about it. Would you have to change, because the voters limited you to two terms, so if you go with a three, don't you have to change that to where now the voters limit you to three terms? Don't you have to make two changes there?
Maybe it's all in the same actual amendment.
I think everything you're putting on the ballot is risky, and what enhances that is the fact that we're going for a November election. And in November election, you don't have traditional voters, so it's kind of like rolling dice. So having said that, I think no. I think no, and I don't think you need to look any farther than, and we discussed this in committee, is a stadium election. That thing barely passed, and I think you're gonna have the same type of voter come out in November, is what I think. And so, like I said, I do believe that everything on the ballot, from reducing the size of council, I think all of it's risky. But if you want to increase your odds, I feel like the two, three-year terms will help you in that circumstances, if it even passes. So anyway, does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the work on the community.
And it was, yeah, it was an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So Mayor, I make a, I make a motion that we go with the two, three-year terms and for the November ballot.
So that would be changing the proposition agreed in that question you just said, the proposition on the ballot, and it'd be amending, you have your sheet there, amending the articles, Article 3, Section 5, and 10.
Article 3, Section 5, and 10, to go to two, three-year terms?
With a max of six.
With a max, with a max of six, yes.
Yes. So would you be proposing the three, two-year term?
Right.
It was fine the way you guys were kind of proposing it, but looking at the two, three-year terms, so the mayor's office is broke out on its own, separate from the council members. And so if you look at the current charter, it says the mayor's term is two years. So if you're gonna change that to three years, we need to add the mayor's article as well.
I know, I know we have a motion on the floor right now, but, I mean, can I, can I make a motion to table this and to dig a little deeper into it?
Yes, we can.
Point of order, and I don't really think we have a motion on it.
Right. Okay. Well, I'll make, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we table this.
All right, we'll table this until your committee gets back, until the council gets together and talks about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So we have, we did approve the first item. And Rhett, thank you for your help. I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Rhett.
Next one is, consider the award of a Lockhart Road Improvement Project. Everybody here needs one time to go stand in Nick's office and see all the projects that are going on. We always smiles, too.
We do. We have a lot of things moving up there. So the first item on the Public Works Committee agenda, well, it's not committee agenda, but the first project I want to talk about this evening is the Lockhart Road Improvements Project. This project is long overdue. Essentially, what it does, it straightens out the curve on Lockhart Road as it goes over the railroad track. And if you remember back several years ago, there were some fatalities there. And working with TechDOT, we've actually acquired through this TechDOT Federal Railway Highway Crossing Program, up to $330,000 that's gonna be paid for through federal and state funds. So anything above that $330,000, the city would be responsible for. So we've laid out this project to straighten out that roadway, and our bids came in on, make sure I find the right date here. We got the, got the approval from TechDOT on May 12th. We opened bids on April 25th. We had four bids, two of them were very competitive, and we came in at just over $345,000. That would put a net cost to the city at just under $16,000, $15,579. If the project stays on track, and we think it will. Now, this is a, this is a reimbursement program, so we did budget for this throughout the year. This is totally included within our existing budget. What we'll do is, in this 60-day contract, we would execute it and then apply for reimbursement to TechDOT. Happy to answer any questions about the project.
Questions for Nick? Hearing none to her, a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we award the Lockhart Road Improvement Project as presented to H4 Construction, Inc.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I'm really excited to talk about this next project, our 536 Well Field Well Sites Project. This is the final phase of our 536 development project. If we remember, we had a transmission pipeline in Site Civil Project, then we did another project to actually bore the wells, drill those drill holes, and do some testing on it. That way, now we can move on to the mechanical and electrical piece, hook those wells up. And we did that on purpose because we wanted to see what those wells would produce. If you're a contractor and you don't know what the wells are gonna produce, then you bid the biggest pump and the biggest motor based upon what we think it might produce. Now, we think we've really honed in on what this, what this well field's gonna produce. That being said, we... That being said, we only had a limited amount of funds, this being the last phase of the project, and we're shooting for $1.277 million. And when it came in at $1.6 million, we all kind of just stepped back and said, okay, we've got to find a way to make this project work. And so, working with our consultant, Providence Engineering, and our local well driller, Associated Well Services, we all came together, and I can't tell you how proud I am of the work that we've done to put this together. Associated in Providence came up with some great ideas to reduce the scope. Associated jumped on board, and they've given a lot because they understand the dedication to this community. And so I want to give a big shout out to those guys for making this project possible with the concessions that they've made in this modification that they have agreed to. That being said, I can talk a little bit more about the project if you have some specific questions. I will say that this is a project that's going to allow five new water production supply wells to come online.
For the citizens' benefit, tell us a bit about how much production you think they anticipate they're bringing.
So I'll start off by saying that our estimates, based upon initial testing, were pretty low, around 150 gallons a minute. We've got a couple of wells in here that are estimated to produce over 250 gallons a minute. And we've got the rest of them. The other three are around 180 gallons a minute. So we're very pleased with those results.
Any questions for Nick?
Nick, I appreciate you.
Sorry.
I got choked up, too.
I appreciate the extra work and effort you put into this and going to the two companies and getting this worked out. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the.
Well, Mark's not here, so you gotta be busy in there.
I make the motion that we award, make the motion we approve to award the, what's the company? I apologize.
Associated Well Services.
Associated Well Service for the 536 Well Field Well Sites as presented.
Second. Our motion is second. Other discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Monica?
Mayor, Council, we've reviewed the financial statements ending April 30th, 2023, seven months into our fiscal year. Once again, most things are as or better than what we had anticipated. For the property tax, we received $36,000 in property tax in the month of April, which is $430,000 over the funds that we collected last fiscal year to date. It's 96 percent of the budget, but it's about $113,000 less than anticipated. We received $703,000 in sales tax in April. That's $825,000, or 17 percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're 62 percent of our $9 million budget, which is about $489,000 more than anticipated. Of the 32.7 million revenue received to date, 54 percent has been received in the general fund, 22 has been received in the water, wastewater fund, 8 percent in the capital projects fund, and 6 percent in the landfill fund. We've received 73 percent of our total budgeted revenues. That's 3.9 million more than anticipated, and that's due to the taxes, intergovernmental charges for services, investment income, donations, and debt proceeds. We've received 22.8 million less in revenue than last year, and that's because we issued debt at this time last year. So if you take that out of consideration, we received 1.5 million more in taxes, $728,000 more in intergovernmental, and $408,000 more in charges for service over last fiscal year to date. Of the 34 million that we've spent fiscal year to date, 40 percent has been in the water, wastewater fund, 40 percent in general fund, 6 percent in capital projects fund, and 6 percent in landfill fund. We've expended 35 percent of our total budgeted expenditures. That's over 20 million less than anticipated. That's due to personnel contractual and obviously capital outlay. We spent 7 million more in expenditures than last year, and the bulk of that is our capital outlay. CEDA has received an overall 65 percent of their budgeted revenue through April. That's $38,000 more than last year and $71,000 more than anticipated. CEDA has spent an overall 23 percent of their budgeted expenditures. That's $143,000 more than last year. That's due to grant disbursements. But it's $653,000 less than we anticipated, both due to capital outlay and grant disbursements.
Questions for Monica? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Mr. Sandman? Remember why it goes on Las Vegas, Dave, sir?
Oh dang, that's half my report. But we did have fun, sort of. Howdy, and welcome to Brandon and Maddie. First time I get to see y'all on that side, which is kind of cool. As we know, you guys got to get used to, we always do it this day in history, just to kind of take the pressure off the things that I actually report on. So we'll do a little bit of that. Of course, a big thing today is D-Day, Operation Overlord. D-Day began as, or had 156,000 allied soldiers, Normandy, France. And the cool thing was, I didn't know this, and I don't know why I didn't know this, but D actually doesn't stand for anything in D-Day. It's just a placeholder for, that allows the entire situation to be scheduled in detail long before the definitive date for the attack is set. It was first used in World War I. So that was it. It was actually Operation Overlord. We lost 4,410 people on that day, and 10,000 were wounded or missing afterwards. But again, 156,000 strong and helped lead the way towards the end of World War II. This was also a day when the electric iron was invented, the YMCA was formed, Walter Chrysler founded Chrysler Corporation on this day. The first gas tax was created when the Revenue Act of 1932 was enacted for one cent a gallon. The SEC, and I'm not talking about the Southeastern Conference, but the Securities and Exchange Commission was created on this day, as was the U.S. Employment Service. And the first aviation gas was produced commercially on this day. For those, when you talk about your three-year terms, there was a game show in 1949 called It Pays to Be Ignorant. So that first year, you could have been on that game show, which would have been good. And of course, Rolling Stones released I Can't Get No Satisfaction. So those of you that get defeated in your election, that would be why, probably. This was the end of an era for the Steve Allen Show and the Ed Sullivan Show in different years. It was the first year of the 2020 program. And most importantly to me, in 1916, 107 years ago, a man by the name of Thaddeus Earl Sanford was born. And the reason this is important for me and why it ties into my report today is because he was what we call a pioneer and not a settler. He was a guy that was born in Kentucky and moved off to Alaska at the age of 19 to lead a coal mine expedition and a gold mine expedition, and led a group of about 30 people as a teenager, created an organization that ultimately was sold to Pennzoil on the coal side and did some other things. But he also, I used to watch the little reel-to-reel films of him shooting bear and other animals up in the wilderness of Alaska. And he went up there because nobody else had been there in the areas that he had been in. In other words, he did it because he needed to not be content with what he was doing in the South. He wanted to go up there and forge new paths and start new things. So he was what we call a pioneer. And that is sort of what has happened here. However, whenever we're talking about economic development and you look around, you think, in fact, Steve and I had this conversation just earlier that he was a little concerned that there weren't a whole lot of new things coming into his office. And of course, and I panicked a little bit, so I thought about some other things and thought, you know what, we need to make sure that we're continuing this. So that was one of the reasons why, as the mayor has alluded to, and we have talked about in previous meetings, we went to Las Vegas for this ICSC conference that had about 25 thousand of our closest friends. And interestingly enough, the cowboy hat did work, did it not, Mayor?
I'm going to comment on that at the end.
Oh, dear. That's scary. But it did help to attract some people to find out how and where they could benefit in Texas and how they could invest in Texas. And this was part of our deal in terms of trying to recruit. We talked, we had over 25 appointments. We talked to folks in the retail, hospitality, dining, junior anchor and big box store world. We talked to brokers, site selectors, entertainment industry. We talked to grocers and several other people. And what they said was, we're Texas, obviously, with high inflation rates and high interest rates across the country, for them to be able to think about, well, Texas maybe is an option for us. That would be something else, something else they thought about. If we're going to go to a different concept, which we have benefited from in the past, smaller concepts, different kinds of concepts, being a secondary, tertiary sized community, then this might be a place that they could get started. So we also followed that up and have talked to several other individuals from that, or those conversations that the mayor and I were able to visit with. And there is still great interest. You know, the first day or two of the conference, there's a lot of deal makings, a lot of, yeah, we'd love you, we'd hate you, we love you, you know, you fit us, you don't fit us, whatever. But the real important work comes afterwards, when you start to communicate with these people individually and talk about what we really have to offer that separates us, Stevenville, from every other community that they talk to. Again, there's a lot of people there. So there's a lot of us going in there trying to do the exact same thing. But on the bright side, we do have some things that are moving dirt. And I think most people know about these. These are things that have been public. But when you look at it as a whole, it's really kind of exciting. We have a tea store opening on the south, or being built on the South Loop. We have Atwoods on 281. We have a hotel at the corner of 281 and 377. We have a medical center in the center of town, a coffee shop on Washington, the front porch or the mixed-use retail student housing across from Charlton. We have some townhomes all across the community. We have condos downtown. We have a tap house and brewery being built. We have a McAllisters that just opened a few days ago. I'm sure many of y'all have already been there. We have subdivisions all across the community that have gone through. We have two more LOIs that have been put forth in the stable development as well. So those are being considered right now. And I just got off the phone with them just a little bit ago, and those are moving forward. At least one of them is moving pretty rapidly. There's tons of infrastructure projects that Nick just spoke about, and you can see that dirt turning everywhere around town, which is pretty exciting. So I guess the bottom line is that Stevenville is not settling and that we are kind of pioneers in terms of how small towns can move forward in development. And I encourage you guys, particularly with our new additions, to keep thinking business first, keep thinking about the different things that we can do to support our businesses, those that are already here, as well as those that might want to come in and create some revenue as well. So with that said, I am done.
Questions for Jeff?
I like that new logo. Can you tell us about it a little bit?
Yeah, we actually started some things on, we have two different ones on here that you can see on our folders here. We started, and Mayor, we saw that this got some popularity. A lot of other towns get, they use different things. ATX for Austin, ATL for Atlanta. You see all these different things. People are really in this, I don't know if it's a fad or a trend or whatever, but people shorten everything. You look at sports heroes, and they all go by, you know, T-Mac or, you know, D-Sven or whatever it might be. We have different things that we use across, and some work better than others. That one didn't work so well, but that, but there are others that are used. And so we thought that we would capitalize on the STX brand as well. When we did our logo, the Stevenville part was all we were really talking about, because as you know, on our city logo, it's sometimes difficult when you're in a room of 25,000 people, and you go, it's very difficult to read sometimes. And we thought that if we're going to go out and promote our community, we want to make sure we had something that was readable. So we started with just the fonts of the Stevenville brand. And we got to think again about, in all of our interviews with folks, that no matter what and how we want to progress, we still have a very strong Texas cowboy background. Isn't that right? So, you know, people still recognize this. In fact, I'll give you one example. When we were in Las Vegas, we were talking to an attorney and another developer out of California, and there was a person waiting about where you guys are. I thought they were waiting to talk to them. And we talked in 10, 15 minutes with these folks. We finished our conversation, and the gentleman came over. He was from New York. And he said, you must be from Texas. I need help. We are Texas. And I think it's as much as anything else, we represent what the heartbeat of Texas is to other people outside of our community. Yes, we're the cowboy capital of the world, but more importantly, we're what other people perceive Texas as being. And so with that, we started to determine that we needed a brand as well, something that we can put on coats, jackets, hats, whatever, things that can be used across the community. And that's the genesis of the STX brand.
Anybody else?
I can say this is, I've been to three regional ones and two national ones now. And it's interesting, the first one went to Fort Worth, and then Las Vegas, then Dallas, and Fort Worth, back to Las Vegas. And it's interesting, some of the people are the same people, their companies. But one of the things I heard early on was, where's Stevenville? That's what I heard that a lot. And at this time, what I was hearing was, what in the world is going on in Stevenville? And that's a big difference. It is a tremendous change. The second thing is, we talked about, I remember we went to see one entertainment business. On matter of fact, it's one of the way out of the business, out of the way of that conference. And they started by saying, well, you know, our wheelhouse is 50 to 150,000 people. So y'all are just really too small. You know, 50 is really kind of even too small for us. But then we kind of started talking about, well, I got an email from them today saying they're interested now. They want some more information. And so a lot of that's just a conversation. And Charlton has a big part of that because of the way that was 10,000 college kids there. So that was a big deal. And the hat and logo, I have to admit, as much as you look kind of silly sometimes, everybody knew.
That's never going to change.
That's true. But everybody knew Stevenville, Texas, because of the hat. And the logo made a big difference as well. And I heard lots of people talk about the logo. And that's really good. But the thing I heard more than anything else, where's Ashley?
Yeah, for sure. For sure. We did miss her.
Everybody loved Ashley. And it was clear, the people who, a lot of them, the settings we set up to visit, or she set up to visit, and everyone was saying, oh, man, she's so organized. And then went on and on and on about her. And so I know she's watching that. So thank you.
She is. And she, of course, she's an asset. And I appreciate you filling in. Well, you were already coming, but you did a great job as well, Mayor, and you looked great in her high heels. I thought you were, I mean, you pulled it off. It was, I didn't realize your calves were that nice.
I get the last word.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. And thank you, Mayor, for going with us.
Considered, gentlemen. Do I hear a motion?
Removed to approve that the Senate agenda is presented.
Our motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Comments for City Manager?
Yes. Last weekend was Mulawest in the community, and so I want to thank everybody that came out for that. And I want to thank all our staff members that put in hours, hours to work that event, get it set up, take care of it. And if you missed that, we do have several more concerts coming up in the park starting next week, next Thursday, the evening with the team, Rodney Crowell. June 29th, Mackin Alley. July 4th, Leroy Collin will be back along with Lady Joe Taylor. And then in the middle of July, Mr. Don McLean and American Park, and me and our city partner. July 4th, City Hall will be closed, but we'll all be downtown and down in the park for our annual July 4th celebration. And as we gave Carrie the award earlier, we didn't really try to talk about it or emphasize that this weekend actually is the anniversary weekend. And so they'll be open down there. Go see Carrie and her award. And I know she has all kinds of amazing specials from back from around that 1948 contract.
The end.
Well, just to add on to what Jason said, I just want to thank everybody that worked on Mulawest. It was wonderful. We were down there Saturday afternoon, and from the fire department, police department, all the park workers, Michaela, Jason, everybody there. I appreciate everything y'all did to put that together. And it is Tuesday, so talking about Jake and Dorothy's, Tuesday is Dollar Burger Night. So go down tonight, have a burger and some waffle fries. So.
Wow. I just think I'm thankful for the rain and the cooler weather we have at this time of year right now, before summer gets here. So it's been great. It's a little different than last May. Thank you.
Bob? I was listening to what Lon said. On Facebook or someplace, I saw a sign that somebody had put up, and it said, people knew the Texans. Texas is just preheating right now.
Maddie?
I want to thank the Stevo Fire Department Station One. Sunday, they let me come down and do a ride along, and I got to see the ins and outs and learn a little bit more of what they do for the community. And I just want to give them a shout out and thank you for letting me come see them.
I want to echo everyone's feelings about Mulawest. I think it was a great event. Everyone put in a lot of time and effort in it. It's awesome to see the park popping like it has been. And just keep, keep doing what you're doing, everybody in the parks and tourism. And I think it's, I think it's been great to watch. Also want to congratulate Coach Swinson and the Stevenville baseball team for going a lot. It's amazing to see what our baseball teams are doing here now. So I think they've done a great job, and I want to congratulate them on their playoff run this year.
I'd like to thank the, everybody that put together Mulawest again as well. We went down Friday and had a great time. went down Friday and had a great time. Good crowd, everything. Like I say, it's a lot, I know a lot of hard work goes into that, and we're sure to appreciate that. And enjoyed my first official meeting here.
Well, done, yeah.
All I want to say is, I mentioned to Darren while we were down at the park, the parks looked great, and he had a good team put together, but it, it starts at the top, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay, in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, subchapter D, Government Code Vernon's, Texas Code annotated in accordance with section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value real property due with real property located at the Robert Matthews survey, and section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property due with real property located at S2600 City Edition. Anything we do in there, we'll come back and do it in public. We'll stand recessed. Did you worry me with your text?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to allow Jason to negotiate with the sellers as agreed upon in executive session.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to allow Jason to negotiate with the sellers as agreed upon in executive session.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we execute the engineering agreement as discussed in executive session.
Second. Motion is second. Do you feel all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. It is 6:56. No other agenda items. The will stand adjourned.